Each Commissioner has a 75%. And I'll ask the clerk to tally the votes. We have 19 present, so we have four. I have good news and bad news. The good news is that our mayor of ours has been appointed to Governor Brevison's Tennessee State Energy Efficient Schools Council. And she is attending, as we speak, the Governor's Summit on Clean Energy, which is being held in Knoxville, Tennessee. So, we're all proud of our mayor for getting this state recognition. The bad news is that you all are going to have to look at me tonight. So, bear with me, be patient. First order of business is approval of minutes. We have three sets. I guess we'll just take them in order in which they're listed on your agenda. The first one, August 18th, 2008. I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Brockman, seconded by Commissioner Skinner. Do we have any corrections or additions to these minutes? You ready to vote? I think we can just do a voice vote. So, can we do a voice vote? Okay. Will each Commissioner cash their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes.
19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes. Then this set of minutes stand approved as presented. Next, we'll do the September 2nd, 2008 minutes. And I will entertain a motion to bring that to the floor. A motion by Commissioner Creek, seconded by Commissioner Harrison. Do we have any discussion, additions, or corrections to those minutes?
On questions.
Okay, questions been called for. Please cash your vote. Will the clerk tally the votes? Oh, sorry.
It's okay. We have 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes.
19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 abstentions, 0 noes. So, that set of minutes stand approved as presented. Okay, next, the minutes from September the 8th, 2008. Motion to bring those to the floor by Commissioner Palet. Seconded by Commissioner Milliken. Do we have any? Commissioner Palet?
I want to just check on this. On the second page, Resolution 08-1-1, Resolution that appropriate funds.
I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. On the Resolution 08-1-1, Resolution that appropriate funds for various departments, I completely amend it down so that the money that was settled aside of the airport with made condition of grant money coming from Tennessee. It doesn't look like this in the case that they were doing.
What page is it?
It's the second page on the 08 post. Resolution 08-1-1.
Okay. I'm sorry. That's correct. I think there, they had several motions through here, etc. I think they were all defeated except the one we were with. I think that was it. Thank you. Okay, did that, are you okay? Okay. Any other?
No.
Corrections?
On questions.
Questions been called for. We cash your votes to approve the amendment. Well, to approve the minutes? Is that right? We're voting to approve the minutes.
With the correction.
With the amendment, yes.
With the amendment. Will the clerk tally the votes? Wait. Commissioner Creek, will the clerk tally the votes?
We have 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes.
The minutes stand approved as presented. Okay. The next thing is our zoning resolutions. Zoning Resolution CZ-12-2008, Application of Stacy Rose from AG to EM1. We'll need a motion to bring this to the floor. Motion by Commissioner Souple, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Martha Brockman. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Are you ready for a question?
Question.
Okay. Commissioners, cash your votes. Does any Commissioner wish to change their vote? Okay, will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes.
19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes. So, the motion, that resolution carries. The next resolution is number CZ-13-13-2008, Application of Catherine D. Kahn from R1 to C2. Commissioner King makes the motion to bring this to the floor. Do I have a second?
No.
Oh, you don't? Okay, we need to bring it to the floor first. So, I'll entertain a motion to bring it to the floor. Motion by Commissioner Souple, seconded by Commissioner Auburn. Okay, Commissioner King.
It's been brought to my attention, Mayor, that they would like to have this table and sent back to the planning commission for us to ask for signature. So, I have a motion to table this.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Are you seconding that motion, Commissioner Souple? We'll need a second for that.
Okay.
Mr. King.
I don't want to table it. I would say that.
Before it to.
Before that.
Before it to.
Before the judge comes to judge.
Before it to the planning commission. Revote. I'm sorry, revote to the planning commission. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Palet. Okay, we have discussion. Questions been called for. Would each Commissioner cash their vote? This is to, if you vote yes, it's to refer it to the planning commission. Will the clerk tally the votes? Oh, I'm sorry, wait. Does any Commissioner wish to change their vote? Will the clerk tally the votes?
We have 16 ayes, 0 abstentions, 3 noes.
16 ayes, 0 abstentions, and 3 noes. So, that resolution passes. That's a resolution to revote. Okay, the next, now we have our other resolutions. Number 08-10-1, Resolution from Montgomery County Board of Commissioners for appropriated funds for renovation of Montgomery Central High School. Do we have a motion to bring this to the floor? Motion by Commissioner Auburn, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Baggett. Is there discussion? Commissioner Souple.
I believe at the time, we discussed this last week, there was a motion presented to budget committee, and was made and requested that we table this until some time that we can review the finance to say that we have four. And I would go ahead and make a motion to put this on the table as approved by the finance committee last week. And that's the request of a motion.
Okay, should I table it? Are we requesting a second? We need a second. We have a motion to table this, and seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Yes. Where's the, how about I turn? Yeah, but Austin.
Yeah, I just want to make a point on order real fast. A motion to table is not really the appropriate motion to make. A better motion would be to refer it back to the budget committee for consideration if that's what you locked it in instead of just table it.
Well, it was discussed last week, and it came to a consensus by the mayor and the budget committee to go ahead and table it, and I'd like to go ahead and just do that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table this resolution. Now, we're ready for discussion. Commissioner Palet, whoops.
I just have a question, as to Commissioner Souple's proposal. And I think it's similar to what I was going to propose anyway, that is, if we send this back to the budget committee or something, and send it to budget committee, ask them to have their question. So, they can look at that, whether they think market conditions warrant, or if it's not on time, finance committee, single, let them, it's up to the board.
This body has to vote to untable it.
Right. That's where, okay, you would have to untable it first. And send it back to the committee. You'd have to untable it here, and then send it back to the committee if you want to take consideration.
But if this gets, what we're talking about now is sending this resolution back to the budget committee, right?
And I would table it.
Until the budget committee decides they want to take it back, though.
I guess the committee has the whole body that are ready to deal with it, and then you can untable it and send it back to the budget committee.
I guess what I'm asking is, who has the pretext initially to untable it? This body.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm not very clear on what the committee recommended last week. I thought it was to leave consideration until the first of the new budget year. That's what I heard.
Now, what is the recommendation of the budget committee? Was to bring this forth when we do the budget again next year, depending on our financial situation with the economy.
Well, what then is the best way to do that?
I feel like you should refer it to the committee. That's your judgment. You could do a motion to postpone it a certain time. A motion to table this may appear. I feel like referring it to the committee is the best way to do it, but that's up to your decision.
You mean third to committee now, and just let them bring it back in there?
Correct.
If we table it, then someone on the committee, on the commission will have to bring it back, right?
That's right.
Right. I would prefer to just send it back to the budget committee, but we've got already a month to our.
Right, we need to just vote on this motion, vote.
Commissioner Baggett.
Thank you, ma'am. Just for verification, Mr. Hart, let me hear you. Given item is placed on the table, is it a simple majority or supermajority to get it out?
Simple majority to table it, simple majority to remove it from the table.
Simple to remove it back. It seems to me that table it just puts in an extra step, that if we refer it back to the budget committee, and they are the ones who have been appointed or approved to look at our financial interest and budget, and then when they see fit, they just send it back rather than adding an extra hoop to jump through, in terms of this body had to vote on it, and then go back to the budget committee the next month, and then it come back. So, I am not going to be supporting the motion to table.
Okay, Commissioner Baggett, second, you can.
I understand, ma'am.
Commissioner Green.
I just have a comment. We have five commissioners who serve on the school liaison committee, and I believe that they need to make a recommendation to the budget committee as well for this body before it comes back.
Commissioner Palet.
I do have a question. Is this, would this be a time to propose an amendment to the budget committee? Or do we have to go on the floor and vote?
And then you can.
No.
You can move. Yeah, with your name.
Well, I'd like to propose amendment that ran at the table this week, defer it back to the budget committee.
That's one amendment. Now, we need to vote over.
Commissioner Souple.
I'd like to ask Commissioner Creek to clarify what's on his statement. I didn't understand what you were trying to express to him.
There is five commissioners who serve on the school liaison committee. Normally, when any type of funding comes before this body, the school liaison committee makes a recommendation to budget committee into this body, and we did not receive it with my knowledge of this fact. And I recommend before this set of fact, that we give a recommendation of the school
I'd like to go ahead and draw that motion in favor of referring it back to the budget committee, for them to review it at the appropriate time in our financial and economic
Well, I have to make sure. Who's saying? Yeah, somebody. Do you want to withdraw or sound? Suddenly, having withdrawn, Commissioner Souple has withdrawn his motion, and Commissioner Bryant has withdrawn, or sound? Okay, and now state your motion. Are you here? Am I doing something? Do you hear that school? Okay, you want to state, I'm sorry.
I'd like to motion to have this resolution sent back to the budget committee, for them to review it, and to keep it be admitted until our finances are in order, and everyone finances.
So, we want to refer it to.
Back to the budget committee.
Do you wish to include any requirement of the school liaison committee in your
I think that's an appropriate, the budget committee has asked.
Okay. Okay, do I hear a second to this motion? Seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Okay, now, do we have discussion on this motion?
Question.
Questions been called for. Would every Commissioner cash their vote? Okay, the motion is to refer this back to the budget committee. I didn't write it down, I'm sorry. For them to bring back at their, in better economic terms. Is that what, was that what?
For clarification, can we just make sure that we have the correct wording? It has to review until finances are in order. Is that the way you say it, Mr. Souple?
You want to just read it? You want to read it?
Sure. Refer back to the budget committee to fore-review until finances are in order.
That's sufficient.
Okay, are we ready to vote? Would each Commissioner cash your vote? Does any Commissioner wish to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 16 ayes, 0 abstentions, 3 noes.
16 ayes, 0 abstentions, and 3 noes. So, the resolution passes. The next resolution is number 08-10-2, Resolution overriding the acceptance of grant funds from the Tennessee Department of Transportation, Division of Governor's Highway Safety Office. I will entertain a motion to bring this resolution to the floor. Motion by Commissioner Baggett, seconded by Commissioner Jennings. Okay, we're ready for discussion. Questions been called for. Would each Commissioner cash their vote? Does any Commissioner wish to change her vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes.
19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes. This resolution carries. Okay, we have county clerk's report by Ms. Jackson. This requires approval from the commission, the nominee, or the reader report.
Councilwoman Kelly Jackson, county clerk of Montgomery County, Tennessee, presents the county clerk's report for November 10, 2008, which includes applications for no recoupment positions, bonds, and oaths of qualified members of deputy officials. I hear my request that the person's name on the list of new applicants to the office of no recoupment be elected, that the oath of deputy officials be accepted, the bonds of qualified applicants to the office of no recoupment be approved, and the oath of deputy sheriff be accepted, their bonds therefore be taken as approved. This report shall be spread for one minute to the board of county commissioners. The first two bonds that you need approval on is Erin Hester, regular council budgets for $50,000, and Erin Hester, 911 emergency communications district official for $115,700. You have deputy sheriffs, Michael Brown, Stephanie R. Cox, Philip A. Killman, Gary H. Tally, and Thomas W. Leal. You have oath judicial commissioner Deborah McKagan and Claudette Lee. You have already received your notary applications, and there were none that were signed by personal assurance, they were all corporate returns.
Okay, we'll need a motion to bring this report forward. Motion by Commissioner Brockman, seconded by Commissioner Creek. Does anybody have any discussion, additions, corrections? You ready to vote? Would each Commissioner cash their vote? This is to approve the county clerk's report. Does any Commissioner wish to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes? We have 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes. 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes. So, the clerk's report carries. Does, I'm not to ask unfinished business. That's stupid, I'm gonna jab it. Does anybody have unfinished business? That was good, that was easy. Okay, next, we have the trustees' release list, which also requires a vote, and I'm gonna call on our county attorney, Austin P. Hornick, to explain.
I believe the list that was turned over to the committee had a minor typo in it, and I don't think that list has been turned over yet before it was corrected. So, you have the corrected document in front of you tonight, that you'll be loving on.
Okay, let's get this on the floor. Motion by Commissioner Milliken to bring this report to the floor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Eddle. Okay, does anybody have a, have you all had a chance to look at this? Are there any questions from the commissioners? Questions been called for. Would each Commissioner cash their vote? This is to approve the trustees' release list. Would any Commissioner want to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 18 ayes, 0 abstentions, 1 noes.
18 ayes, 0 abstentions, 1 noes. So, this motion carries. Let's see, next. Okay, I have to sort them out. Is it this one? Is that this one? All right, you have some other reports that you've been, there should be on your desk. The September 2008 permit review and adequate facilities tax report, the sheriff's office annual financial report, the T-DOT project status report, projects and facilities report, and then the quarterly road list. We need a vote on this, July 1st to September 30th, 2008. Do I have a motion to bring this report to the floor for approval? Motion by Commissioner Bryant, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner King. Do we have discussion on this report? Or corrections, or whatever? Are you all ready for a question? Would each Commissioner cash their vote? Does any Commissioner wish to change their vote? Will the clerk please tally the votes?
We have 19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes.
19 ayes, 0 abstentions, 0 noes. So, that motion carries. And then the, we've already, the trustees' report is also one that you should have there. Now, I'll call on Commissioner Benny Skinner for a report from the nominating committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. The nominating committee has made a recommendation following.
I'm sorry, my head.
Okay, the nominating committee has made, and would recommend the following. Delinquent tax sales in the police community. We recommend Juan Souple, nominated to replace Nancy Kito for a two-year term to expire Ruth Killman is up, eligible to serve another one-year term expiring October 2009, which will complete her first two-year term. Equalization board, we recommend Chuck Hatch to replace Laura Matthews for a two-year term to expire April 2010. We recommend Curtis Minz to replace Tony Bubbs for a two-year term to expire April 2010. On the board of health, we recommend Dr. Ronald Whitford to replace Dr. Scott Locksley, veterinarian, for a four-year term to expire October 2012. We recommend Reverend Frederick Robert Harris to replace Marie Killmore, who is a citizen representative, for a four-year term to expire October 2012. We also recommend Dr. James Hamilton to serve another four-year term to expire October 2012. Please use the form for nomination.
Okay, we have these nominations on the floor, and since it's coming from the committee, we do not require a second. Do we have any nominations from the floor? Okay, then I'll ask each Commissioner to cash their vote to accept or reject these nominations by the nominating committee. Does any Commissioner wish to change their vote? I'll ask the clerk to tally the votes.
We have 18 ayes, 1 abstentions, 0 noes.
18 ayes, 1 abstentions, 0 noes. So, this motion by the nominating committee carries. Now, we have the county mayor, nominations and appointments, and there's just one, it's to the museum board. Charles King is appointed to serve another one-year term to expire September 2009. And I think we do need a vote on this one. I'll entertain a motion to place this nomination on the floor. Motion by Commissioner Harrison, is there a second? By Commissioner Skinner. Is there any discussion? For any nomination? Oh, you can't nominate. Sorry. Would each Commissioner cash their vote to accept or reject this nomination? I'm sorry, did you have a request to speak that I missed?
Yes. But that's okay.
Well.
My question was.
We have to tally.
Do we have to vote on mayor appointment? I don't think we do.
No, don't. I thought we did.
We never have before.
We've been, we've been voting on county mayor nominations, but not the county mayor appointments.
Right.
Oh, okay, sorry.
It's okay.
It's a.
We already did, it doesn't matter.
It's an appointment.
It doesn't matter. We won't charge.
Well, it was unanimous, so. Does any Commissioner wish to change their vote? It's irrelevant now, but clerk, would you please tally the votes since we've done it anyway?
We have 18 ayes, 1 abstentions, 0 noes.
18 ayes, 1 abstentions, 0 noes. So, I'm sorry, that motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, do we have any announcements? Commissioner Baggett.
Thank you, ma'am. Just had a question. This is my attorney, I heard over dinner tonight that EMS meeting tomorrow has been canceled. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, I've heard that, but I haven't seen official notification from any of the offices. I just want to make sure of that. Thank you.
Our chairman, Sissy M. Gassel.
We really don't have anything. I really don't have anything else to say except that he's scheduled in the near future.
Okay, that's why, have you wired it up to speak about the EMS?
No.
Okay, do you, okay, tell your unit on that.
Okay. You want to turn this off?
It is on. Okay.
Okay. The meeting tomorrow will be canceled. The mayor wanted to attend, and she is out of town.
The meeting tomorrow will be canceled, the later one to attend, and she is out of town, so it will be rescheduled in the near future.
Commissioner Van Asser.
No, I'm, I'm going to answer.
Okay, Commissioner Ford.
Thank you. I just want to mention that tonight, prior to the meeting, I put a copy of the wheel tax question and answer sheet that the public engagement committee put together for informational purposes, for each commissioner. And this is the question and answer sheet that we're distributing in the community so that people have access to the information, and that everything is perfect when they put on their phones, or, or every commissioner that have a copy so they see what it is, and have the information available to them that we are in effect distributing in the community. Thank you.
Mr. Douglas. Whoops. What kind? Commissioner Van Asser, did you want to say?
We just want to encourage everyone in, if you're interested in participating in some capacity in the Christmas festivities, when we're feeling gloves, or a club, or wacky, or something, if you can get your interest to us by the end of the week, I'll call your office, let us know about participating. We don't want to make a lot of arrangements if there's not a lot of interest, but if there's interest, we'd certainly encourage you to sign up for everybody to participate in the event at that time. So if you can give our office a call, so we can know your position.
Commissioner Skinner.
Just a comment on the sheet, the wheel tax question and answer, it looks very well done, a compliment to Commissioner Flady on that. How are things going to be distributed throughout the week? Can you give us a little idea on how that's going to be done?
We have a distribution center set up at the library. We are, we've had civic groups ask us to send people to the president's meetings, so we're doing that, and we distribute flyers at the meetings, that we go to, and we send to the civic groups. We've emailed, we've sent this out electronically to a number of networks, email networks in the community. So whenever we have an opportunity to try and distribute it, whether it's an archive or the email attachment, we're trying to access any entity that we can, trying to disadditionally effectively.
One question, I'm sure this is a little bit difficult, because they may be to answer this, as far as a little problem, I guess they would charge to place this in the paper one day, is that not, probably not correct, or?
We have.
I don't know whether that's.
We have talked about that, Commissioner. I guess they would charge this way. But we did, they did an article on the wheel tax, on the paper a couple of days ago, it's very loaded, Mark. And I believe that we are going to have the opportunity to talk to their attorney Wednesday morning, and so we'll see what that turns out.
But if we did place it, would be, even the size, it would be a, would be a real costly thing to do.
We did, we knew, once they told us that they would charge us to give us an answer at the beginning, but going further than that, I'm not sure how much it costs, but.
Commissioner James.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to publicly, thank the engagement committee for the work they put into this area, they're really good. And what I have found is, I went and did the school website, and actually downloaded the PDF file, I was able to send this information out, email it to some of my decisions, and as I could share with them, you know, I got a more positive reaction, and once they understood more, and the education process, what was going on, so just to share that it's out there, and, you know, download and send it out, and I guess just talking and sharing with the public should help. And I just hope that one says thanks to the engagement committee.
Commissioner Skinner, you're doing the best. I'm having trouble turning this off. You didn't punch it in, did you, John? Commissioner Campbell.
Yes. As certainly as chair of the rules committee, I would like to make one, as any concern that they would like to be discussed, we're in a process to set it up, and we can unlock here for many of those who have some concerns to be discussed by the rules committee.
Anybody else? No more answers. Okay, I'll call on my sheriff to enter the meeting.
All right. Better County Board of County Commissioners, Assistant Darren, God Save State Department Board of County Commissioners.